We're down most of it, so you might be part of it or...
Crystal ice. It's refurbished, it's done, like a rock just kind of...
Crystal ice.
Uh, crystal ice, like ice provider.
Ice, ice.
Ice.
Which I hate that song because it's so bad. We even hate going.
Yeah.
Next. They have that.
They have that and then they have a tannery.
Yeah, I was gonna say there's not much to them. Yeah, I'm just curious and yeah, I'm just gonna send something out just so people know that's coming.
Are you ready to go?
We are good and there's nobody on.
Alright, sounds good. Let's officially call this meeting, uh, first meeting in May of the City of Mount Vernon to order here. And first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. And we've got one item tabled and we'll keep Maggie on where she's scheduled.
Move approval of the agenda that's presented.
Second?
Second.
Move second to approve the agenda. All the way to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries.
I'm sorry, the table business is these aye, table business?
Yeah, that's stay.
Yes, is there another one in this?
No, no, I especially, there was some discussion about moving Maggie later when she's here.
That's right. Todd Gurke would not find her on the way in.
I was going to speed line, but I paid attention.
Word travels.
Private joke. Communications section of the meeting, this is the time if anybody wants to say something that's not on the agenda, um, they can do so and, uh, I think you want us... Joe, who are you gonna say?
Sure. I don't go to a microphone, I just stand up now?
You can't?
Or I go up here?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And turn the mic on because now we have somebody on.
And I have to turn it off?
Just push the button.
I push.
And it'll go turn...
The button right here.
And it'll turn green.
Okay, it's green. So my name is Joe Jensen. I'm the Director of Main Street Marketing for Mount Vernon Lisbon Community Public Group. As many of you know, and I don't know if everyone in the community knows, but, uh, my last day here is gonna be June 28th. Uh, it's been a wonderful 14 years and I just want to say thank you to all of you, and all of you, and all of you, and make it everybody in this community who has embraced me and my, uh, non-traditional family. And, um, it's been a great run and I've been very, very happy and blessed to be a part of this and I'm not leaving the community, so know that. The second thing I wanted to say is, uh, Drew Heck has been hired as my intern for my last two months here and he's gonna stay on for after me. And, uh, he will help with two festivals that I won't be working on, which is the, uh, the Antiques Festival and the Heritage Days Festival. The two of us, as part of our duties for Chalk Walk this weekend, actually went up and down the street and went by one camera. And, uh, I, I think it works. We count only the, uh, adults out on the street and not anybody in the businesses. We do that once an hour, we go up and down the street, click, 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 click. At the end of the day, we count them all. So I could, I could pretty confidently, uh, say that we probably welcomed about 12,000 people into our community this last weekend. And even with the rain, uh, it still was a, a really great weekend and we still had a lot of people and, uh, everyone, uh, has fallen in love with this community again, as most of us do who live here every single day. So, and the last thing I wanted to tell you, um, as I move on from my current position, uh, Robin Bostrom, who's from, um, Main Street Iowa, contacted me last week. They're celebrating the 10th anniversary of, uh, the Open for Business Contest and that's a grant contest. And that's open to any, um, Main Street community. And individual businesses from these communities can learn, uh, win up to $20,000 for their business, which is a really cool program for a small, small, small business. She wanted to call me because now that they're on the 10th anniversary, there's only one community that has applied for a grant for this grant every year of those 10 years. Anyone wanna cash which one? Anyone?
Yes.
Yes, indeed, so our businesses have won that as of right now, seven out of 10. Uh, the latest one, and that would have been, uh, Katrina and Joel down at the new coffee place, they applied this year. But that'll be the 10th year. And, uh, although we've applied, we haven't heard yet how far we've gotten, but if they get to the top five, um, that'll be eight out of 10 years that we've been on the top five, which is really cool. That is insuring those businesses a $5,000 grant. So I'm very proud of that work. In addition, uh, the Challenge Grant's another grant that we do, uh, try to do every year. We have had, uh, seven wins there, uh, totally three, totally $313,000 for small businesses in Mount Vernon. So Meredith and her group at the fire station next door, we're the latest, they got $100,000. Um, but over the years we've gotten 313, it's a dollar, dollar match. So that's actually 626,000 at least quoted in our community. So when you total those both together, it's too much for my little head, but it's a, a lot of pretty money. And, uh, it's part of the job that I've appreciated the most. So that was all, I wanted to come and say thank you. And hopefully I'll see you all again one day. Alright.
And Joe, I understand you, you were gonna stick around to help, uh, continue to write grants, is that correct?
Well, I, I...
We're talking about... We're talking about...
But I would be honored, yes sir. Alright, thank you.
Car doors.
Thank you very much, don't leave that, Joe. Thank you very much for your 14 years of service. Thank you for being, uh, the number one cheerleader for the community of Mount Vernon. And, uh, there may be someone else doing that job down the road, but they'll never replace your, your spirit and your attitude, Joe. Go us! Let's go us. Thank you, Joe. Now, Joey, you got something to follow here, right?
That Joe's making money, I'm here to say I'm gonna take money from you, so. I'm Joe Heredia, I'm the Communications Director for the Solidus Agency. Mr. Mayor Council, nice to have you back, appreciate it. Here to give our update on services and programs. Gonna cover our two locations, um, our landfill, our second location on the County Home Road. Internally, we call that Site Two. Uh, Site One, Mount Trashmore, the closed landfill that's down the recreation area. And Site Three, which is our compost facility adjacent to Mount Trashmore down by Chuck Village. So I'll jump right into our FY 25 coming up on July 1st here. The disposal fees are gonna be going up a little bit. Currently, we charge 45 per ton for garbage, that's gonna go up to $48 per ton. So that's gonna be $3 increase coming on July 1st. And I'm gonna be a bit of a broken record when I talk about this, because I'll get to it a little bit later, but as we're laying those space goes down, that price is gonna continue to go up. But our flat fees for residents is gonna be staying the same, so the minimum charge is $22. And then, uh, the flat fee for cars, if you come out there and you're a Toyota Camry, Honda Accord, Chevy Impala, it's a $12 flat fee. If you're in an SUV, a minivan, crossover, or station wagon, a $15 flat fee. And if you're in a pickup truck or a full-size van, it's a $22 flat fee. And so with that, that always one to mind, folks, if you're in a pickup truck and you get a lot of them every day, you have one bag of garbage, you're gonna get charged $22. So use your curbside services, it's cheaper to get that extra sticker from Republic than it is to come all the way out to us. So make sure if you're coming to us, get your money's worth. And then other disposal fees for FY 25, yard waste is going up to 30 per ton from the current 28, a $2 increase. Stay in the $10 minimum load at our compost location. And one note to go with that, we no longer take any yard waste out of the County Home Road location. Um, we don't have our own grinder anymore, we go out for contract grinding services. And so transporting material back and forth doesn't make sense. We've only been taking small woods out there anyway for about the last four or five years, just like brushing leaves. So now, any yard waste, take it down to A Street, but no, you guys have grown in the community here, so that's not a big deal. This is for Mount Vernon residents. And the other odd change is, uh, commercial recycling that's going up $5 per ton from the current rate. And that's what we charge, uh, City of Marion and the private haulers that bring their recycling directly to us. If, uh, you know, I think Republic from here takes it directly to their facility on the southwest side. So that's, it's more for the M.C. reps as well. So we get charged $118 for the processing, so that helps us offset the costs. We wanna make sure people continue to recycle with that option. But we are gonna have some changes coming up with our recycling program. So residents of Mount Vernon, when they come out to us, you can still drop off your paper, your plastic, cardboard, aluminum steel cans, glass. Uh, they can drop it off to us for no charge. Starting July 1st, we're only gonna be accepting ones and twos for plastics. Because, you know, if you look at it right now, it says the one through seven. And I've been hearing, and we talked about this in years past, like, ones and twos, people always ask, this doesn't really get recycled. But ones and twos, they do get recycled. For the last five or six years, three through sevens have not. So it's getting taken, you know, we take it, uh, they pick up curbside, it gets down to Republic, they do the sorting, and they pull those out, and they get all these bales of threes, fours, fives, six, sevens. There's no market for it. So, you know, recycling's a commodity, nobody wants those materials. Those are the, like, the yogurt containers, things like that, to take home, things of those, of those nature. So that gets just brought back to us. And so it's getting landfilled. So ones and twos get recycled, so we thought, you know, it's truth of advertising time, you know, we were hoping that the markets would come back for those things, they just haven't. Because oil prices have remained relatively low and there's that type of plastic, there's just, it's cheaper to make new material than it is to make material out of the recycled plastics. So starting July 1st, when people drop it to us, we're just gonna take ones and twos. We know some stuff is still gonna mix in, this is gonna be a big education change and it's gonna take a while, but it's the only thing that, for plastics, that's getting recycled, so we figure, let's actually do it right. So, uh, you'll see more and less information to residents and things like that, we'll have handouts for it, but that's, that's our big change there. Other, uh, recycling services, staying the same, appliances, still $10 per unit, scrap metal, no charge. Tires are going up a little bit, it's, we're gonna charge $4 per tire if it's off the rim, $5 if it's still on the rim. And this is a pass-through cost for us. There's only one basically tire recycler for the entire region, they're out of Des Moines. And so when they tell us what the price is, that's the price that we charge, so it's a pass-through cost. Batteries and medical sharps, still no charge. And I think, I know, I've talked about this every year, but it's a big one for batteries. Any battery, bring it to us, we'll take it for free. We have about two to three buyers a week still that get caused by batteries, those, uh, lithium, lithium ions. They're in kids' toys, they're in computers, people throw them away, they get run over by the dozer, the contactor, they crack open, they ignite with the air. We stop it before it becomes a big deal like, you know, a fire that we had in Iowa City six or seven years ago. But, uh, we used to, we used to advertise, you know, alkaline batteries don't need to be recycled technically. We were regular household AAA, AA, 9 volt. But it's confusing for folks, especially now they have these lithium batteries that look like regular alkalines. So any battery, bring it out to us and we'll take it for free. Just to keep that stuff out of the garbage. Uh, TVs and monitors are staying the same, 15 per unit regardless of size and weight. All other electronics, uh, no charge, so bring those out to us. And then household accessories, materials, still no charge for residents, so paints, chemicals, cleaners. This time of year, everybody's getting their fertilizers out, working on the lawn and garden. If you have leftovers with those, you don't wanna hang on to them, bring them out to us, we'll take them for no charge. And our hours remain the same, seven to four, Monday through Friday, and then by appointment on Saturday. So from 8 to noon by appointment on Saturday. And we do, do the appointments because that keeps the traffic from spilling out on the County Home Road. That was a huge issue because everybody would wait until the very end of the day, then it gets back up to Highway 13, that's a violation of our permit. So this way, we get the same amount of people, it just spreads them out over that four hours. And the two new services that we've added since last time I was here, book recycling.
Before you go too far, on the, on the, um, um, just your blank. The, uh, electronics, um, when you're talking about, uh, all other electronics, no charge, um, with, with the, uh, changes in, uh, cables and, and connectors for various devices, uh, can those be brought out?
Yes.
So chargers and all those?
Yep, great, yeah. You've got the old coax cables, you know, from the cable TVs, things like that, yeah, and all the old chargers that don't fit anymore, absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah, so basically, when it comes to that, I say, if you can plug it in and it's not appliance, we'll take it and then plus all the accompanying accessories.
Yeah, thank you.
And then the new services, uh, books, so both hardcover and softcover books. Took, we finally found a market for those, so we can take those. Because before they said, oh, the binding, the glue and the bindings and that, but now we got, uh, Republicans taking them from us and it's getting pulled. So if you have to get rid of that, is, you know, if you can't donate them, somebody doesn't want them anymore, drop them off to us right there in the Resource Recovery Building. And then our tax dollar recycling program too is going really strong, we partner with Refill. So as long as they're clean and dry, we'll take any type of clothing and shoes as well, those can be dropped off. Uh, and then moving down to our compost location, we do have screen compost right now. Um, that, that, you know, if we ever run out, I always encourage us to check our website first, we'll update there if we're out of it. But right now, we do have screen compost available, no charge for residents, as much as you want, you know. Uh, as much as you want, it used to be you could come in multiple times a day if you had a trailer, but we've been running out of it the, uh, last couple of years now. So we've asked folks to link themselves, like, one trailer going a day and we'll, 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 Joe, no charge. And then woodchips, we still have a huge supply of woodchips, uh, the double ground ones that are good for landscaping, those are for free. And so if the City of Mount Vernon ever needs either compost or woodchips, let us know, we'll provide those for the city as well.
Want to get any other? It's up to you. I think we're good, thanks for that.
And, uh, and Mount Trashmore is back open and that's, you know, that's always weather dependent, we have a pretty set of hours with that because even though it looks like a park, it's still a regular site, that's a closed landfill, but we try to keep it open as much as we can, uh, in the weekends and everything like that. So if you happen down there, we encourage you, come take a visit. And the Mount Trashmore Challenge is back going this year. Uh, the district down in New Boeheim Street is sponsoring that. If you go up and down Mount Trashmore 140 times, that's the equivalent of scaling, uh, Mount Everest. And so they have a prize standing away if you can do that. There was a guy last year, he finished it in three weeks. He would come down there, he was retired, he'd go up and down, just not stop all day. His wife would come with him, the guy who runs the sites, I'm just like, eventually the wife would come, she's like, just tell him I'm leaving. I'll catch up with him later, I can't take it anymore, so. Most people take the whole year, he got it done in three years. Alright, uh, moving on to forward 2044, uh, plenty for what's gonna happen next. Um, we know the landfill is gonna be closed. Our location where we're at right now, we have to close June 30th, 2044, per our settlement agreement with the City of Marion. We went to them and they asked if they'd allow us to expand at that site, because there's technically, DNR relations allow for a landfill to have a 500-foot setback from the southern boundary. Our settlement agreement with the City of Marion says we have to have an 1,800-foot setback. So if we could use that 1,300 feet, that'd give us 25 to 30 years more landfill space. We asked them, hey, can we consider doing this? And they said, no, we wanna stick to the settlement agreement, which is their right, we signed it as well. But that means we're gonna, uh, we're gonna have to close that location in June 30th, 2044. However, the landfill itself is gonna be full, right now we stay at the same levels, nothing changes by 2036. So, and that's, that's part of the reason why you're seeing us close more often. It used to be, you know, different sections of the landfill, we'd go down, we'd go down and behold, we call it behold, like, down there, the garbage would get dropped out there. So it might be windy up top at County Home Road, if you've ever been out to Tuma, you know that it's windy every single day. But now we're getting, we don't have as much space, we're always more up on the top, the section of the landfill. So it's not just wind speed, like, some people wanna know, is it, what's your, what's your speed, is it 25, is it 30, is it 35? It's not so much wind speed, it's wind direction. So when the wind's whipping out, it's gonna go north on the County Home Road or directly east on Highway 13 and it's, you know, over 30 miles an hour, that's, that's a big thing. Because then it's also a violation of our permit for garbage to leave our site. And so we shut down just so that it's not blowing around and we don't have the county mad at us and the City of Marion and our neighbors, things like that. So as we get more full and we're higher up, it's probably gonna be more likely, just because it's just, this is like, the worst spring I think we've ever had. Last couple of days have been nice, but before that, you know, we were having closed down quite a bit. So we don't wanna do it and we know it's a huge inconvenience. I've had, I'm the one that gets yelled at when the haulers are upset and, you know, because we're the only option around for the landfill and it's just like, I understand we don't wanna do it, you know, because we don't take taxpayer dollars, we pay for all of our operational costs too by the garbage that comes in. But we just do that because we wanna stay compliant and we wanna be a good neighbor to our, our neighbors around us. So that's what's going on there. So I do apologize, but, you know, don't take it out on Republic, it's us that we're having closed down because of that. But moving on.
It's good to know some of that background, um, you know, but it's too frozen, you can't put a lot of garbage trucks, they're gonna get out.
Yeah.
And then the whole wind thing and the fact that where you're at in the hole or the top of the hill or whatever.
Yeah, and we, we have temporary fencing that we put up to try and capture it. And then we have three, uh, rows of permanent fencing that are there to catch it. And then that garbage is just, it binds away. Boom, that wind, it gets out, loose stuff. And that, first thing, we'll shut off styrofoam and plastic bags, because there's some people bringing bales of just that stuff, so that gets shut off first, because that's the worst. But then other stuff too, you know, you have all the paper that's in garbage, it just gets blown around. So that's what's going on there. Uh, we do now have tax alerts, uh, so if you wanna sign up on our website, we have the number there, decide for tax alerts, so you'll be the first to hear. So we try to, we, if we make the call, we wanna get, you know, at least several hours notice so that they can prepare. You know, we try to make sure that the city trucks and the private haulers can get in, so, before we shut down. So that's that. But, so figuring out what we're gonna do, if 2036 rolls around and we're full as, as expected, uh, our site will probably operate as a transfer station. So the garbage will still come out to County Home Road, but instead of being landfilled, we'll drop it off on the side of our Resource Recovery Building that doesn't take recycling. We'll load the garbage into the open-top semis and then it will get taken out to either a landfill that has space or hopefully a material resource recovery facility that will accept it from us. Um, so that, that's what we do. But in the meantime, if that does happen, we will still have to close on June 30th, 2044, all operations have to cease. So at that point, we'll have to look at another transfer station. Because we went through that process, about two years of our board looking alternative technologies. And there are alternatives to landfilling and transfer, they're just really expensive. Like a state-of-the-art incinerator, $1 billion. Where we don't generate enough garbage in the county, we'd have to get the entire state of Iowa's garbage, plus some from Minnesota, so you have to do it 24/7, so there's just not the volume there. There's a process called mixed waste processing, where you get all the garbage and then you go through it and you open up every bag and you pull out what could have been recycled or what could have been composted. And that sounds great, but every time you handle garbage, the cost goes up. And it's just not cost-effective to do that for the amount of garbage that we receive. So most likely, it would be transfer stations and as you go through the process, I, in the presentation I sent you, there's a, shows a transfer station, we basically already operate as a transfer station with all the recycling, Resource Recovery Building, we're just the middleman. So it comes in, it goes back out, garbage is gonna do the same way. But again, the only bad thing about that is, it's gonna cost more. If we wanna do everything apples to apples that we do right now with all those, uh, programs, because most of the recycling ones I was talking about, they're subsidized by the garbage that we receive, especially like household accessories materials, the other electronics besides TVs, things like that. If you wanna keep doing it the same way, the tipping fee would have to double. So instead of it being $45 a ton, it'd be $90 a ton. So as we run out of space, the tipping fee's gonna continue to go up. So I'm not here one year going, yeah, hey, it's $48 per ton. I come back next year, oh hey, it's $105 per ton and everyone's like, what happened? You know, they're not prepared for it. So as it goes up, that's, that's what's gonna happen. But in the meantime, uh, you know, until 2044, we're gonna be open out there, even if we do eventually become a transfer station. And we're still gonna continue to offer a lot of these diversion programs, because, you know, people take advantage of every program that we have now. You know, we could keep almost 50 to 70% of what gets thrown away, you could either reuse, recycle, or compost it. You know, when it comes to us, it's too late. And so it's hopefully, educate folks about doing it, and if we can't make anybody do it, but we wanna know that the options are there to do it and that'll help us stay, have a little longer. Because who knows when the next flood, the next derecho, the next tornado's gonna hit. And, you know, the derecho took two years of airspace away from the landfill. So if we get something else like that, I might be back here next year going, hey, wait, it's 2034, it's not 2036. So that's what we're trying to prepare for, so we can handle the next disaster.
Questions, Joe? I'm not finding board members, uh, for the next decade or so, if I had to propose a table meeting. These are gonna be cheaper if you, uh, transfer. Right, these are the potential site. Any else? Thank you very much. Alright, guess who? Take care, next. Anybody else here for the public comment section of the meeting? Otherwise, um, I need to address something that came up this weekend. I'm gonna take a piece of the public section, the public comment part. Megan Jones contacted me at, uh, Chalk Walk to say that, uh, she was contacted by the Lynn County Historical Society, Lynn County Museum, well, Lynn County Museum, about, uh, doing a display or presentation on, um, this year Pride Month of Lynn County, basically. And, uh, one of the items they wanted to feature were quite great to our efforts a year ago, uh, with, between the diversity and equity inclusion statement, between, uh, our proclamation in June, Pride Month, and the whole flight policy that, uh, came out of the council and so on, and is being implemented in the coming year 2024. So she was looking for signatures of the council members that were here at that time. That's one reason I told them that I thought she was gonna be here at the early part of this meeting, sorry about that if she didn't show up. But, uh, but, uh, so if you see Megan Jones or if she's trying to get in touch with you, that's what that's about. It's, uh, nothing to be concerned about, it's, uh, probably a, a conflict here. So, um, just recognize that's what that's all about, just want to let you know about that and... It's for now. Any awesome communications? Otherwise, we'll go with consent agenda, we've got three items. Any questions about those items or can we move forward on those?
I would move to approve the consent agenda as written.
Secondly, it's a creative all of that. Move second, move forward on the three consent agenda items. All the way to the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? She carries. No more guarantees or ordinances, move to Maggie Spear. Go start with explanation, okay?
Sounds good, everyone, thank you Mayor Council and Maggie Berger with Spear Financial. Uh, we did hold a bond sale this morning for the issuance of $4,840,000 of general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2024. Uh, we did receive five bids and they're at the bottom, um, of your letter that was provided to you, your award letter. We are recommending that we would award to Robert W. Baird and Company of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. They were the low bidder, we are by law required to take the low bid. Um, and they are going to pay you a premium. And so that still means you're borrowing in principle $4,840,000. They are going to pay you a premium of $109,000. What that means is, as you can see, their true interest rate down below, um, that they are in bold, is 3.7029. If we look at the very back page of the packet, um, that they are bidding at 4% interest rate all the way down. To be very honest, in our planning, we were using 4.5% interest rates because we really were unsure of the premiums at the time and, and we were seeing some 4.5s around the end of December last year. Uh, that 4% interest rate, it would be a 4% interest rate if they did not give you the premium. By giving you the premium, they're giving you dollars ahead saying they know that interest rates in the market are not 4%. So they're gonna pay you money ahead to buy that interest rate down to that 3.7. Because it's a combination of the true interest rates that are bid and either the premium that they give you or the discount that they take out, is how we get to our true interest cost. Those, uh, premium dollars can be spent on projects, almost everybody's project, right, has one cost overrun or, or you could do something additional. It also can be set in the debt service fund, which means it could be used to offset the sources of revenue that you are gonna use to make the bond payments, um, in the future. So, very important, but we still have five really great bids. Um, I do wanna point out, 3.7 is, is a really great rate in today's market. We've seen those rates come down, um, even from last fall. Your last issuance of debt, GO debt, was 2022 and that interest rate was a 3.1631%. The lowest that we have outstanding to date for the City of Mount Vernon is from 2019 at a 1.6079%. So, with that being said, you know, what you're doing is, oh, sorry, I'm gonna cop here. My apologies. What we're doing is, you know, we're seeing the effects of the Federal Reserve living on interest rates. The city did experience a downgrade with S and P. Sorry, I'm gonna grab my water, my apologies. I've been on the phone all day long. Um, the, the city did experience a downgrade. That has to do with the significant spending out of cash. So we talked a lot about this, you have a lot of projects going down, you have spent a, a significant amount of cash over the last couple of years. That was the true reason, to be very honest, I don't think that it had a negative effect today in our market. So, um, we're really seeing this 3.7%. Last week, we saw 3.65, but that's really been the lowest. And we have five bids today and we haven't seen five bids in a lot of our issuances. Um, our bid from Robert W. Baird did include U and V Bank in that bid. They're a bidder that we talked about on the phone today. They're typically a bidder that we see, but I think because of the size, they weren't able to take that on, on their own today. So just the size, they were, they were a bidder who's a part of that first bid. We also wanna point out that Northland Securities, who took third place and it did have Mount Vernon Bank and Trust, um, bidding with them as well. So we give you a breakdown, and again, that interest rate, uh, that final debt service schedule is on the very last page. The bonds are callable when we get to 6.1 of 2032. That means at that time, you could call them in, you could refinance them if interest rates are lower, or you could just continue to pay, the call is at your option only. With that, I'd answer any questions that you have.
As Maggie mentioned, um, Mount Vernon was involved, uh, for local securities, that was the third place bidder here and, um, Chris and I got an email shortly after it was settled, that, um, from Craig Smith, the officer that handled this transaction, to say that that's who we partnered with, they were in the hunt, but they did not get it and we'll do that and give them the next time. So, because they were pretty, uh, uh, successful bidder, with whoever they aligned with.
Correct.
Well, and Craig obviously knows that we have to take the...
Yeah, 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 there was no...
And the...
No negotiation, yeah. It was a courtesy email.
We appreciate the participation, believe me.
Yeah, and historically, um, I was surprised not to see U and V, so thank you for the explanation there.
Yes, yes.
And, and oftentimes, U and V has partnered with some of our local banks as well. So, um, uh, again, appreciate the, the work you've, you've done, Spear Financial, that has been a part there with City of Mount Vernon for, you know...
We thank you.
Years and years.
Rising interest rates tied the market. So you see bidders coming together, we just don't see eight in that bid that we probably saw in the 2015, 2016 time frame.
So excellent work, everyone, thank you.
Any questions of staff or... We've got a resolution on the floor, 5-6-2024A, directing the sale of 4.8, et cetera. What's the role of council here? We're moving forward. Any last minute explanations? We know where it's going.
I would move to approve resolution 5-6-2024A, directing the sale of 4.84 million dollars of general obligation capital loan notes, series 2024.
Thank you, Craig. You have a very big mark. Craig Mark. Move second to move forward with resolution 5-6-2024A. That is a roll call vote, so if you are ready, motion.
Turler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
That motion carries. I'm invited at this time to, as I mentioned earlier, as Scott says, the last minute was not able to make it here tonight, but hopefully it'll be better soon. And also want to acknowledge we have Senator Molly Dowdery who is in the audience here tonight. She is out of, out of capital, I find it, a couple weeks out, but is running for our Lynn County Supervisor's spot. The coverage area, I'm not sure what the district number is, but it's Hale, Mount Vernon, Lisbon, parts of Mary. District three, okay. Wherever represented, please. That resolution is on. Move number two, rise of preliminary plant in Silver 1011, this is Mount Vernon. This is the six lots we were talking about on the north side.
Yeah, fortunately cul-de-sac. It was originally, kind of earmarked for potential stormwater controls, but with the addition, additional ground that was purchased for the 11th edition. They were able to do some things, change some things around so they can actually use those, that area if they're locked.
Sure they'd be glad to build on that, state of water retention. How does he pass engineering inspection? So are we ready to say most of them?
I would move to approve the resolution 5-6-2024B on the preliminary path, revise preliminary plant of Stone Brook 10 and 11, petition.
Thank you, Paul. For second.
I will second.
Second. Move second to move forward with vice six 2024B. Ready to vote? Marcia?
Anderson?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
That resolution passes. Moving on to the next one. Who's, who stopped sign location at the city of Mount Vernon? Bryant Road, Bryant Court, remember correctly?
Bryant Court at Bryant Road. It says new stop sign just because we haven't found the resolution from the previous one, but we were talking to staff. We're pretty sure there's been a stop sign there before. They wouldn't post it, I remember. And I don't know if it disappeared during the duration or when it disappeared, but we had requests from the postal service to replace it. And so not finding the other resolution, we're just trying to go through this process.
Big up.
Yep.
Any else for staff to add? That's pretty basic. Questions of council?
No. Given the number of kids out there for soccer games and families with them, I will definitely approve the stop sign location.
Thank you, staff. Second, I'm Mark. Move second to move forward with 5-6-2024C. Marcia, I mean, color of vote.
Engel?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
And that resolution passes. Moving on to the next one. Final resolution, construction bid for water meter installation. 2024 water meter replacement project. A lot of good news in that one. The price of meters, the viable bid, the completion date. I mean, is there any, anything more missing here?
Yeah. The only thing that I would say is that we did have an additional bidder on the project. They were not considered a responsive bid. We could have not used one of the two water meter systems that we asked in the bid itself. So we had bid this project with a request that they either use the Neptune or Census Meter. Wind Water responded with a Mueller water meter. The, the two meters that we specified were done on purpose. They're the two most utilized systems in Iowa. And we did a lot of labor reviewing the communities that had recently gone through this process. So Wind Water's bid was about $20,000 less than Ferguson's, but again, it was considered non-responsive as they didn't do that, as specified here. So the recommendation is to approve the bid of Ferguson Water Works with a bid alternate for a total price of $672,943.20. This is 320 some thousand dollars less than what we had expected. And I had, I think, prepped the council for a two-year construction. And they think they can get this done before December.
For this December.
Wow.
It's nice that, it was nice when we moved the budgeting process that we built in contingency for overages.
Yes. Even if they were to get it done in this fiscal year, that would be quite, quite a feat. But Ferguson comes with a lot of positive recommendations. So I have a lot of the two-year area that have utilized their services. So excited to get this project moving forward. The last time this was done, I want to say was somewhere between 15 and 20 years ago. The other part to this is they will be doing a survey of lead lines. They're not fixing them. We're only touching the meter, but they will make note of them, which is what you're required to do.
So Chris, given that and the number of historical homes that we have in the community and thinking about frozen ground, are they going to place preference on those where they might potentially find it?
So probably not going to find as much in the water system as you would think. Typically, water lines are changed or redone more often than say electric. So I'm not as concerned about that. But we did have to do a survey by we were going through this process of historic homes because we were actually going to do the different funding mechanism prior to just fitting this outright. So we actually went through that process with all of our historic homes and have identified those areas as well. So this will obviously move to a system that we no longer have to read meters. That will free up at least one staff person for about what amounts to five days per month.
That's true. And I see added benefit of real-time monitoring.
Yes.
Yeah, we can read these meters theoretically as often as we want. It's a matter of how much data they will want to encumber. But the good news is, you know, if you're not in your second month, by the time that you realize, yeah, we'll leak a toilet or something like that, it'll be found in at least that month. Whether or not you take your advice and look for the leak is still maybe on the property owner, but.
With that, I would move to resolution under 5-6-2024D, making the award of the construction bid for water meter installations for the 2024 water meter replacement project.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
If you were. Do you let me know that Governor Mayor Jim Engleberg told me that this was on their agenda in the council 25 to 30 years ago? So it's been that long that it's been out there. So we're getting caught up, coming from the gym here. I also brought to some of the sustainability committee meeting last Thursday to mention to them that, you know, instances where people are letting a toilet run or a situation we had west of town a couple of years ago and they found out that there was water being dumped into a.
Sistern.
Sistern, yeah, I mean, forever. I mean, they couldn't find out the source of it. This will alleviate, and we have a city policy, if I remember correctly, that we do some discounting when they have a multi, you know, huge five times the normal water bill. So this is going to fix a lot of issues and make us, you know, bring us into the great century here. Motion on the floor to approve resolution 5-6-2024D. And if there are no comments, ready to vote? Marcia?
West?
Yes.
Engel?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Turler?
Yes.
Resolution passes. No narrow proclamations this month and old businesses staying there. Motion for approval is the first item claims list. So a second copy that got sent out this afternoon. Questions for Marcia on that or? Should we move to approve? All move to approve.
Second.
Move second to approve the last issue of the claim. No questions? All motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, discussion consideration of part-time grants for community development personnel. That's where we're at here. Sorry, I jumped down. That's mine. Appreciate the ambition. Be bold, be bold. Do you have anything to add to what's been talked about already?
Is there, is there, is there an end type to this today?
No, so it would be two days a week. This would probably be less than $12,000 a year. We would not hire a city hall intern like we did the last couple, couple of years. And then we'd have a conversation about the CDG internship next year. Not the one that's going currently, but the one next year. So, but there are a number of grant projects that are currently underway. And we potentially have a number of grant projects that may be underway. More to come on that in the future, but. We're just moving, we would just be moving Joe from the visitor center to city hall.
Grant writing is a valuable skill and I'm happy to see that shift.
Yeah, I mean, kudos to the businesses in the downtown, but don't think for a second that the streaks of winning have anything less to do than what Joe writing is and this accessory that we have. He's very thorough. He very much pushes, pushes the businesses to put their best foot forward and you see the results, so.
No, they're difficult to respond to. And we saw one a couple of months ago that Lori wrote the grant for. And boy, I mean, sometimes they're, they're very complex, very detailed, so, yeah.
Well, I, I can say that in the 20 years, roughly 20 years that I've been involved in city government as an elected official, the amount of grant money funding that's come in in the last 14 years is much more than the previous 10. This is an ideal situation, a little situation that I think would be foolish not to take in range.
And then this will just be at the pleasure of city administrators. I would move to approve the part-time grant writing position.
I will second.
Move second to move forward on that position. When we do that, I'll also mention two things. I've gone to a couple of the Des Moines events where Joe picks up the big check and takes photo opportunity and can include the last one. IDA loves him. I would partner with economic authority, love him. And he is a rainmaker from Mount Vernon. So this is a way to take a negative situation that we're losing us a strong person in the CDG role and still keeping his, his strength on a, on our, on our bench. Here, hold in. So, to you, to Joe. Motion on the floor to approve part-time position? Are we ready to vote on that? All who've ever had motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is discussion consideration of police hiring strategies. Why isn't he in all of advertising in our newspapers?
And everybody else.
Thank you, Jeff. Sorry about that.
Nathan, did you want to answer that one?
You got a great job, you got a great ass.
So am I.
Edit that one out. Yeah, exactly.
In charge some five times.
I've been talking with Chris and Lori and just kind of working over forecasting for the next year, knowing that we have a planned retirement, most likely January, February, probably January timeframe from that standpoint. Knowing that law enforcement hiring is pretty much every agency in the state of Iowa has got applications out right now. There's a ton on the list. Everybody's looking, they're not getting a ton of applicants. And a normal hiring process for us would take six months to nine months to get through the entire process before you get to a point where you're ready to make an offer. So I would like to take this opportunity while we're full staffed, now that the building project's over, and take this opportunity to start the hiring process. And then we can identify through that process when the appropriate time to make a hiring decision and hire the person. A lot of things come into play at that point. If they're already certified or they're not, if they're not certified, we can start to target a academy training time, get a slot because we know who the person's going to be and possibly even get them through the academy before we experience the shortage here and stuff. So that's kind of my request that I've had with, with Chris and Lori, just trying to stay ahead of the game as much as we can, get the ball rolling before everybody else scarfs them all up as well. But there's, there's, it's a struggle across the state of Iowa, across the country, honestly. I'm getting a lot of requests. I've had three requests this week for officers looking for part-time work because they're no longer in the field, but they don't want to lose their certification. So they've taken jobs outside of the field in the civilian market and want to maintain their certification as a police officer, picking up a shifter. So a month or something along those lines. So I'm getting a lot more of those requests, which is also kind of concerning that, you know, you're, you're losing some that are in the field and how we're going to maintain those as we go. So I think the sooner we get started, the better off we can look forward to things.
In my mind, it's totally approved. It's almost like why you wouldn't have searches going on all the time.
All the time, at this point.
At this point. It's such an important position and even Eldon's team and other teams that we have here in Mount Vernon, there is some human resources that you expend to do this. There's some financial resources with position descriptions and getting them out there and so on. But it is probably well worth the low amount of dollars that it takes to do that, to be ready when you do have to.
Hate to sound like burping record, but I will. For those of you who have never been in, through the experience of hiring for law enforcement, it is a completely different animal than virtually any other position you've ever been involved hiring in. And we've been fortunate over the years to have great staff doing that, that type of work. And Doug, you know the respect I have for you in the department and I'm so glad you brought this forward. Not only that, I have a brother who served many years in federal law enforcement and, you know, that is a very important thing that we work with Doug and get this done. Gaps in service of law enforcement, similar to gaps in service in the fire department as we have daycare and they, they're just virtually unacceptable. So we really need to do our due diligence and do this. Thank you.
I appreciate it.
We're going to maintain our status as a preferred law enforcement employer.
I hope so. Absolutely.
Keep that, keep that status.
And we'll have the sun create just a one-size-bigger hat in the.
You've got council action as needed. Do you need?
Really, it's just the intent. It's the intent of allowing us to move forward with advertising and starting that process.
I would move. Release the partner hiring strategies to move forward.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
More? Move second to allow Chief Shannon to move forward with his hiring strategy. All who've got the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Pay application number two on Davis Park lighting project.
Well, we're not exactly sure how, but they never sent us pay application number two. And Arden Lighting never contacted us and let us know that they hadn't been paid. So pay application number two in the amount of $68,846. Pay application number two in the amount of $68,846 and that makes sense. Um, so Arden will actually get pay application two payment and their received check in the same envelope.
Pay attention cash flow there.
I'll move to approve the pay application number two for Davis Park lighting.
Thank you, Paul.
I'll second.
Move to second to move forward, uh, pay application number two of Davis Park lighting project. What's the timing of the rest of Davis Park? Is there any?
Yes, you guys, and whether or not we can get the rest for, for 100, 200,000 dollars.
So nothing on the table right now. Let's get this off the table with, uh, this payment number two here. Ready to go? All favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
I, I do have one quick question, just to point and talk. Have you had any feedback about the lighting?
Uh, positive. I mean, uh, there's a lot of softball on the baseball teams that are trying to get on that field now. Does elongate the availability of Davis now.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Where it wasn't.
I haven't had the, the pleasure to be down there with, when the lights are on, so having spent hours and hours, days to be quite, uh, over the years, um, I'm excited to, to go down and do that and do that.
Moving on to the next motion for approval, got a public hearing date. Amendment to chapter 99.02, municipal code.
So the next, Yeah, the next two are set public hearing dates. One's for sewer rates, the other's for water rates. Water rates are what we discussed, however, the current ordinance, had any date like 2018, so we need to update the language on the 3% increases. Uh, sewer rates obviously are going to go up at least 8% this year, next year. I was feeling really bad about that too, until Maggie just told me she left Independence and they're talking about 65% increases in sewer rates, so. The, the requirements that the city is, has to meet from the state every two years for their operating permit, obviously, um, increase substantially year in, year out. And we have to be prepared not only to, to repay what we've done in phase one, which is about 1.5, 1.6 million, but we have another phase of at least 1.5, probably around 1.5 million, that has to done at our point. Just to satisfy this requirement, we probably start doing the whole process again.
So light that we're taking tonight is the state of the public meeting day.
Just setting the date and then, yeah, we'll see the two ordinance.
The motion, let's handle it separately. Uh, is there a motion, the first one with the, uh, water rate?
So moved.
Thank you, Deb.
For the date of May 20th.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Stephen Craig. Move to second to move forward, uh, May 20th for the public hearing of a water rate increase. We're going to ready to vote on that. All favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Same process.
I will move to set a public hearing date for the amendment to chapter 92.02, also to May 20th, 2024.
Second.
Okay. Move to second to move forward, um, another public hearing date for May 20th. No further questions. All favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Seeing, seeing that date reminds me that I need to, you know, I will not be in attendance, uh, to that meeting. I'll be in sunny, sunny, you know, for work.
I did not plan on asking you to wait reading, so I shouldn't be for, as far as expedience it goes, the sewer rate probably the, the more pressing of the two. Normally we do this in July, so I'm just getting a little bit of that started.
Thanks for the heads up, Paul. Next item, this discussion consideration, sign proposal, Fire Station signage project. This is our example here. We've got chief here.
Yep. One thing about this is we're, we're on quality behind the ball of this. I'm happy to be at this point.
It's an urgency there.
So I, uh, just a little bit of backstory on this. Um, when we initially built the station, the signage costs were astronomical and they still are and we found a really good product here that's probably, um, a third of the cost of what an actual real, uh, real stone signage would be. So that's why we kind of decided to move forward with what we had left over in the, uh, lost, lost fund for the station, so. The one caveat with that is, uh, I was looking through that today and this is my fault. We did not include the electoral report, but I don't think that will exceed probably $5,000 because, um, we had, uh, when the station was built, we actually ran power out there with the anticipation that that's eventually what the signage is going to be, so. I know it's been through P and Z and, um, I believe, uh, the counties are already, uh, yes, on our issued appropriations for it, so. I think we're ahead the curve there, just, you know, if there's any questions on it, how we get decided to only, um, light the First Avenue side of it to just kind of be good neighbors and not have somebody's, you know, our light, light wash onto the neighborhood on the back side, unless I can help you, so.
Is the action we should take for the 17, 955 or do?
I would say at this point, what they lagged here, probably not, not to exceed, um, 24,000.
It would be easy to spend it all.
And Rickards is doing this whole, whole thing, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so yeah, with the exception of, of the electoral board, so yeah.
And by the way, um, Doug, you said Rickards did the sign in the, uh, training room, which is beautiful.
They've done all of our vehicle graphics and everything as well.
Well, having waited 12 years, years of being named, I would move forward for the signage, uh, amount to 24,000 dollars.
Second to the 24,000.
Second.
Move to second to move forward for the Fire Station signage project. Captain, 24,000. Ready to vote on that? All favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
The race is on. You see if the water meters get in or the water sign.
Total tree care. Tree maintenance project.
Um, So normally we don't get, uh, as many trees and this time number six, falls under my normal approval, but this, this invoice is in the amount of $9,918.75 for six different locations. And they do, obviously you have to be certified to do any tree removal around power lines. So they are automatically called in and we have that in right away. Uh, they're also called in when we have larger trees, they have a crane. They can drop a tree and have it cleaned up in under an hour. Incredible to watch their process.
They're amazing.
Yeah.
They had a rate to clean up by, I was working from home when they were in my neighborhood and it was fascinating.
One thing I would say about total tree care too, um, post the rate show or even during the rate show, they really could have gouged communities knowing that they're seeking reimbursement and being, they did not. Their prices are very similar to what they were eight years ago.
Then you take them and, and write them up?
They're very good to work with, uh, but, um, Seth works with us, uh, if it, if it's, if it's anything worth saving that we can get, we can sell to a lumber, lumber company, which we have done a lot in the past. Um, he'll log that out for us and take it out to the yard. Um, and then we can, we can kind of reap a little bit of capital on that to, to, to make up for the cost of, of the tree work. Uh, three out of these six trees were, uh, more emergency situations. There's one on Hilltop. I kind of forgot this was on here, so I wasn't prepared, but, um, there was one, two on the northwest side, um, that one had a cable in it from several years ago that it's, the split in that went clear down to the ground now, um, after drainage. So they were, they were more of a major safety concern. So had to get them in right away to get it done. Um, I was not aware of what it was going to cost us until I saw the invoice. So I apologize. I'm not trying to get that sooner, but.
Paying, it's a fair price and I will move to, um, approve the consideration of invoice 12026 from total tree care. By the amount of $99.18.75.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mark. Move to second to move forward to total tree care. 8,000 plus, good. I go for the questions to staff and ready to vote. All favor that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Reports, starting with police department. Annual report.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the annual report, um, we've put out, uh, after we've divulged through all the data that we've collected over the year. Uh, reports, different things from there, so, uh, we were able to get the video link, um, thanks to the sun allowing their YouTube channel to, uh, of the video of the remodel, uh, which is part of the annual report as well, uh, to go through, so. Hopefully, we had about 100 people through the open house last night, uh, which was great, from about four to six. Yeah, we were, didn't know how many to expect with Chalk to Walk and everything else, but, um, a lot of people through and everybody was glowing about, um, the building and what it's looked like. Uh, a lot of the former church members came through and were looking at it and just
Didn't recognize.
Didn't, uh, didn't recognize where they were at and what part of the building, so we did, had to walk them through like, well, this is where that used to be and, um, stuff like that, so a lot of positives.
They would like to see that YouTube video, I bet.
Yeah, that's, and that's why we've shared it on the Facebook page today, so they were asking for some of that, sharing it out to their other parishioners and everything else, so. Been very neat.
Anything else?
Um, nothing on the annual report. On the, I said, if you get a chance, there's a lot of information in there, so, um, and I know you just received it, so if there's questions or anything like that, feel free to reach out to me. We can walk through them. Um, there's, the call services look down a little bit, but we've also, um, you know, some of that could be the way logs are being done, um, training with a new officer. Um, if there's two officers in a car, they're working off of one log versus if they were independent and stuff like that, so, um, it'll fluctuate a little bit with different things like that, where the data is being pulled from. We have to go through about probably no less than seven different sources for data, um, to, to formulate the numbers with where they're at.
Doug, how do you define public assist?
So a public assist really can be anything. Um, if we're, you know, car unlock would be a public assist. Um, helping somebody that maybe have fallen in their home, anything like that, so. Um, some of them are very generic like that. The radio dispatch trips are calls that we're receiving from dispatch or somebody is calling us to a call. Um, the observed trips are what officers are initiating on their own, um, or seeing or coming across different things from there. And then really the, the whole chart kind of breaks down in different aspects and how it's handled. Um, but, you know, we do a building search, like it, if we're, like in the night shift, a lot of times they'll do building checks or school checks to make sure the buildings are locked up, different things like that. Um, those would count as a public assist if they found those.
So is it fair to say that those are probably things that are initiated and then you're not doing any further action that might show up in a different column here?
And we'll just add, you know, if it, we can just add on to the columns if it turns into, you know, an example would be if we went to a bill, if we're doing business checks downtown and we've, we come across the, um, a store that's got a busted out window.
Yeah.
Um, and we come across that, um, that's going to be a 24 and a 31. Right off the bat, we go in, we make contact with the business owner. They're like, well, that's somebody broke in and, you know, we have a burglary now. Now we would have, um, might be like a 27 on there. Now you're, now you're testing me, um, to see what's on there, um, with what the numbers are.
Because the hours are so heavy on public assists.
Yeah, yep. Um, and so tho- those are just numbers, so the nu- that is, those aren't hours. The only time
I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, the time ones are the administrative, investigative and Cornell are spelled out in time.
Right.
Yep.
So I, uh, spent a night out years ago with one of the officers, I think it was Willie.
Yeah.
Um, and he happened to make a building check out at, um, Country Club. And when he turned the knob, the door opened. And it progressed from a building check to a burglary.
Yep. It happens.
Yeah. Quite an exciting evening.
Yeah, nope. And it, that's, that offer is open to council anytime, so anytime somebody wants to come out, it's a great experience. It's good for our officers to get to know you.
Don't black yourself in the car.
We all, there's that. We see, we keep you in the front. You're okay.
I got in the back.
Yep. Those are good photo ops, especially in your own council.
Yeah, I wouldn't advise it. Yeah.
And that didn't get to the sun.
We, we have better networks now.
Turkey knows better. Okay, my only other question that I thought was really great was the decrease in property crime 2019 to 23, even though we've got the addition of Lisbon on here midstream.
So I always
How many thoughts on?
I do. I cringe at these. I cringe at these and I cringe at the fraud dollar. When you look at the dollar amount like, oh, we had $275,000 in theft. Well, that could be one fraud case. Um, or different things like that that we work are one identity theft or 10 identity thefts. You know, it all depends on the year and what's going on. Same thing with property crimes. Um, we have been very low on burglaries and different things from that perspective. Um, we used to, you know, there was frequently before where, uh, with like our, we have a lot of parking lots and we have a lot of cars in our parking lots with Cornell. And we used to get, uh, groups of people that would come out and they would spend a night and break into 30 or 40 cars, um, which is 30 to 40 burglary reports, um, as it goes through, and so one of those incidents can jack that number way high, um, for a little bit. So you probably see a little bit of that. Um, you remember back not too long ago, it was, I mean, I have to look back now, five or six, seven years ago, um, we had a, uh, person running around town breaking into houses quite a bit. Um, and so you're probably getting on the tail end of some of those on the reports as we go through as well, so. Yeah.
Thank you very much for the good old mouse.
Yes.
Slowly showing well, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Reports, mayor's report. I guess one of the things I mentioned in, um, my report is that I did reach out to the, the incoming, uh, state director, I guess is the right term now, um, Kara, I almost wanted to think of her name, but she's going to go out and have coffee sometime. She couldn't make the sustainable meeting last week, but she's going to be out from Mount Vernon. We'll continue to engage with her and, um, have a meeting Thursday, sustainable committee and so good, going on the programs like, uh, the home energy kits, distribution of that, rain barrels again. We didn't get here in time. We may still be facing a lot of elephant at some point, uh, but getting rain barrels back into town as well as continuing to work on, um, some prairie items at prairie areas, um, in parks and so on, that, uh, Chris has been with different people on, so. Members are continuing in that area. Any other council reports? Dr. Robert.
I didn't show up at the, I wasn't at the, um, Mount Vernon Lisbon Child Care Solutions meeting last Wednesday, but, um, with Tom's help and other members of the committee, we are going back on the field with a very short survey to augment the 2022 survey in the state of Iowa, the county survey, um, on the need for childcare and I'm really very appreciative of Lori Warren helping with the survey monkey, getting it in a proper format and so on, so thanks for that. Thanks for your work on the survey. That's, uh, that was a lot of work.
So when did you send it? You sent out, you did.
Uh, I think it probably was getting, you know, Lori, you're, you're not going to let the grass grow under that. You're probably wanting to get it off your plate, right? You're going to get out.
What's that? Oh, yeah, I'm going to send it up.
I was your ginni today.
Okay. Keep an eye out for it.
But I had to figure out how to do the answers.
And it just, as, as a side, you know, it, it, because there are two, three question surveys. One's going to parents or those that are supporting children with childcare, so guardians, grandparents, what have you, and so forth. Um, and the other's for businesses and we're trying to find out do businesses think there'd be a return on investment if we were to put a ton of time and money into childcare? And we're talking millions of dollars and would parents pay for it? Uh, premium prices, where it's already for an infant in the state of Iowa, $240 a week and so, um, we need to find out before we really start putting any more, more time. I thought John Harp had an excellent point at Cornell when he said, uh, Aunt Pino over in Lisbon has a hundred plus person waitlist and with her childcare. Um, and one of the first people that we should send that survey to were all the parents on the waitlist to see. Would they be interested in something like this? Would they spend the? Would they spend the resources for that? So anyway, just an example of the conversations.
Thanks for keeping us up to date, Helen Wood. Council committee, city minister, your report, Chris.
Hello to Mayor, we are carrying to Lotville on Thursday to look at their downtown, some things that they've done with their streetlights. Are you ready, eight of us? Seven?
The outfit was suburban.
All of us laughing there.
Lori's going to drive the Equinox and I will drive it.
I like the Equinox, the big, big one.
Now, this way, when she's in a city vehicle, she remembers that.
Uh, double A negative.
The only other thing that I had, I did want to point out, is Maggie did and didn't explain, we were downgraded, obviously, from double A negative to an A plus, we're still, we're still very good, obviously, interest rates share that, but I just wanted to point out that a lot of the cash reserves that we have quot down come in the form of one-time dollars. So our funding spent all of our $686,000 that we received there, and we spent another $200,000 that's come from the account. So there, another drawdown that they point out in the annual report was for almost $800,000 that comes out of franchise fees and a little bit of local office sales tax. So while the cash balances are great, for us to continuously sit on taxpayer dollars and not do anything with them is a bigger problem than being downgraded one step to an A plus. So I was happy, you know, S and P women, we were on the phone with them, did say quite frequently that this was a difficult decision for them in the first place. I still think us being at a double A negative for the two previous bond issues was probably not fair, because we were sitting on one-time dollars that we just haven't spent yet.
Do they only do a review of the bond rating when it's time to enter into it?
The cost of a bond rating is such that you only do them when you're going to sell bonds. And you only do them when you're going to sell a lot. If we were to go out and borrow a half million dollars, the bond rating wouldn't be worth it. But that's my staff in the test, walked around opening for the last few weeks with this whole thing. But the interest rates being what they were today, very happy and.
Yeah, it's somewhat analogous to the person that routinely pays off their credit card bills every single month. They have a balance of zero, and as a result, their credit rating is lower, because they don't have debt.
Yeah, I'm excited. We have a lot of projects, we were just talking earlier, the fourth, or street. Project, get some cul-de-couple commentary from the individuals living around and travel up. That project will hopefully start this year, pool will start this year, and the water meter project will start this year, so it's a happy project.
Anything else to add, any questions, staff or Chris? Any else that needs to come before, because council, otherwise we are adjourned, thank you very much.